Calling to order the November 13th, 2023, meeting of the Auburn Board of Selectmen. This open meeting of the Town of Auburn Board of Selectmen is being conducted both in person and remotely, consistent with Chapter 107 of the Acts of 2022, which suspends the requirement of the open meeting laws to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. Further, all members of public bodies are allowed to participate remotely as long as reasonable public access is afforded so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. For the public to join the meeting remotely by telephone, dial 1-4-0-8-6-5-0-3-1-2-3 with access code 235-235-861, or the public can join via computer at global.gotomeeting.com/join/235-235-861. All supporting materials that have been provided to the members of this body are available on the town's website. The public is encouraged to follow along using the post agenda. Please note that this meeting is being recorded by Auburn Cable Television. Is there anyone in the audience that is also recording? Seeing none, we will rise for the Fudgeal Regents. This board needs to move into executive session to deliberate upon matters which, if done in an open meeting, could be detrimental to the effect, detrimentally affect the litigating position of the town regarding strategy with respect to litigation, to come out of executive session, and we will reconvene in open meeting. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion that we go into executive session in accordance with MGL Chapter 38, Section 21, 83.
Is there a second?
Second.
This is a roll call vote. Mr. Crane?
Yes.
Ms. Kavanagh?
Yes.
Mr. Chambers?
Yes.
Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
The Chair is yes as well. This, we will be moving into executive session. This may have detrimental effects on the negotiating, because this may have detrimental effects on the negotiating position of the public body relative to litigation. Once the board is completed, once the executive session is completed, the board will reconvene and return to open session. Okay, we're reconvening in open session. As a reminder, this meeting is being recorded by Auburn Cable Television. I will ask again, is there anyone else in the audience recording? Okay, seeing none, we will continue. Do not have any public comments?
Madam Chair, I would make a motion that we move up Agenda Item 7A, 7B, AA, and 8B.
Is there, all those in favor?
Aye.
Chair is yes as well. So 7A is a board vote on the maximum useful life cycle of departmental equipment. There's some information in our packets. Is there a motion?
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion that, do we have to read this whole lovely thing? Of course we do. That the maximum use of life of the department, of the departmental equipment listed below, to be financed with a portion of the proceeds of the borrowing authorized by a vote of the town passed May 2nd, 2023, Article 4, is hereby deemed determined, sorry, pursuant to General Law, Chapter 44, Section 7, Subsection 1, to be as follows. Purpose: iPad Initiative, $150,000. Maximum useful life: 10 years.
Second.
Are there any questions?
I just have one question, Madam Chair. Through you to the Town Manager. 10 years, I assume these are Apple iPads that are being used by staff. I've never known an iPad the last 10 years.
So these are, these are used in the public school system?
For students.
So they are filtered down to the lower grades as they get older, but yeah, they've...
Okay.
Are there any other questions? Okay, there has been a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The Chair is unopposed? The Chair is yes as well. 7B is the board vote at the sale of 1.656 million bond anticipation notes. Is there a motion? Does anybody have any questions?
Madam Chair, could I just summarize what the board is taking action on?
Certainly.
So we currently, back in November of '22, we went out for a short-term borrowing of $600,000. That renewal is coming up. We thought it would be in the town's best interest to renew that for another year and fold in what is needed in the FY24 capital. After discussions with the Treasurer Collector, the Assistant, as well as our Financial Advisor, we thought it would be prudent to go for a nine-month period. I believe in that interest rates are going to settle back a little bit and we would get a better rate at a nine-month than we would if we went out for a year. That being said, these notes are going to come due in August, at which point we will reevaluate the situation and either go out for another one-year ban, or we may borrow it at that time, all depending on the rates. We are going out for an additional $1,506,000, as approved by a vote of Town Meeting. We received a rate and they're being awarded to Piper and Sandler and Company at a net interest cost rate of 4.525. I can tell you, the last time we went out in November, we probably, our rate was well below 2. Rates have gone up, and that's why we are suggesting we go over a nine-month period because all indications lead us to believe that the rates are going to settle back a little bit as we get a little deeper into the, into the year.
Through the Chair, can you, can you repeat what the amount borrowed and the rate was? I think it's different than what's written.
So the total award is $1,656,000. It was a rate of 4.750. We got a premium of $26,4960. Net interest cost is 4.525.
Are there any additional questions?
Yes, through the Chair, I noticed that our bond rating on this information sheet is AA+ So did we get a better bond, a better rate, interest rate because our bond rating, our rating is so high?
Absolutely. We didn't go for a rating. We will if we went out for a long-term bonds, we're required to. There is a short-term rating that was reaffirmed at a AA+. So we go through an extensive rating review when we do a long-term borrowing.
Okay, thank you.
Absolutely. We do get a lower rate because our rating is a AA+.
Are there any additional questions?
I'll make a motion, Madam Chair, that the sale of the $1,656,000 bond anticipation notes dated November 28th, 2023, the note to Piper, Sandler and Company at the price of $1,658,649, sorry. $1,658,649.60 is hereby approved and confirmed. The note shall be payable on August the 15th of 2024, and shall bear the, bear interest at the rate of 4.75%.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The Chair is yes as well.
Now, Madam Chair, do we have some notes to sign?
Yes.
And this is the, I mean, TANSAF, I mean, yeah. There's two of these, and this gets signed here, and then there's another. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to move along to Item 8A. The Solid Waste Recycling Fee Change.
Madam Chair, I'd like to call up our team, Colleen Hines and Darlene Coyle. The matter went before the Solid Waste Committee. We prepared an analysis of, of costs, direct and indirect costs as it relates to trash. And we were upside down roughly by $138,000. I just want to make aware to the board that our costs have substantially increased as it relates to collection and disposal of trash. So our current contract, which we worked on for a number of months, resulted in some parameters that unfortunately were, I guess, proposed because of the current economics. So at a time when we negotiated the contract, the CPI was running at about 6.5%, we were able to, to whittle that down somewhat in an attempt to enter into a, a multi-year contract and try to take advantage of some, some opportunities. We ultimately ended up with a three-year contract. One year is, is fixed and the other two are optional. So we do have an opportunity to, to seek other if, if we notify the vendor within a certain amount of time. That being said, we worked on a, an analysis of costs, which I said was roughly about $138,000 upside down. As a result of that, that analysis was taken to the Solid Waste Committee, and I, I see some of our members are here, and I want to thank you for all the work that you did, which ultimately led to a vote last Thursday morning, I believe. And so I'm going to now turn it over to Colleen and Darlene to share that, their vote with you.
Thank you so much, Ed. Good evening. So the, for solid waste and recycling, it's always something that we are watching as far as the, the fees and knowing kind of how things are changing and the dynamics of it. As Ed mentioned, we did have quite a lot of back and forth on the contract to try to negotiate the best price. And the things that we're seeing this year is there's a lot more attention to what's happening in the world. So that's affecting our costs at the local level. And so with that in mind, the CPI does play into the contract a lot more this year. And kind of how we're fitting into what we are, how we handle trash and recycling at the local level is trying to pay attention to everything, all the fees that are passed on to the user. So we have about 5,300 households on the trash system. We are proud of the service that we offer and looking at kind of what the indirect costs are and how those relate to the fees and making sure that the, the solid waste fee reflects just what the service is to the people that are on that program. So as Ed mentioned, that we did have to take a look at the fee increase this year. We met with the Solid Waste Advisory Committee, and I would like to thank Lisa Roachford, our Chair, for coming this evening. We did kind of look at different options, and Colleen Hines, our Solid Waste and Recycling Coordinator, came up with several options for the committee. And looking through all of them and kind of figuring those pieces out, I believe you have in your packets, the fee that was voted as recommended. So on the single family, the small trash, the 35-gallon, you'll see a increase, an annual increase of $5.80. On the large trash, which is the 64-gallon, and that one is going to be an annual increase of $31.80. There were several different options that were presented, and all of them were discussed. And this is the one that was chosen. We do have, this gets reflected in the multis. So on the two-family, three-family, and four-family, the price is reflected as well. So happy to, to answer any questions about the process for you. And then in addition to that, we do have kind of Part 2 on the agenda for kind of a creative way that we kind of discuss together, something that might be an option for people not to have their bill go up, actually, but want to kind of take them separately just to make sure we answer any questions appropriately.
Do board members have any questions?
I do, but I'll...
No, no, go first. I was go first, so please go first.
So I know you guys did a lot of work on this, but I just want to, did you guys research what it is for households to do private removal, and how does this compare to that?
Yes, so I looked into private haulers. I spoke to a few, I think Republic, Pratt, and maybe even Casella, which is the hauler we use for the municipal program. And they're roughly like $45 to $50 a month. So it can range anywhere from like $4.50 to annual or even more than that. So it's still pretty low compared to that.
And then, I think my next question kind of ties into the next part of this, but if people were to downsize the 64 to 35, the cost for trash bags, if they need the extra ones, is that, are you looking to increase that as well, or is that going to stay the same?
Yeah, the overflow bags would stay the same, which is $7.50 for five.
And that is also, if I, if I may, the committee did look at that as well, and they, they decided that it was not, that's not something that they wanted to increase. Knowing that we had the solid waste fee going up, they didn't want to increase the blue bag. So that's a recommendation from the committee.
And if I may, I think in consideration for this recommendation, we don't want to have to come back every year and ask for an increase in fee. So we try to balance it out over a period of time, absorb it, knowing that there's going to be annual increases every year. So we're not, believe me, we're not looking to make money on this program. We're just looking to cover our costs, and that was the, the primary focus of, of this recommendation. I think the incentive piece, which you're getting ahead next, is very enticing. I think it gives people an opportunity to downsize what they currently have and reduce costs at the same time. Hopefully that will promote some additional recycling, get costs down at the wheel, and result in some additional savings as well.
Thank you for all the work you put into this. Just one clarifying question on the spreadsheet here. What's the exempt large, exempt small, and exempt 2F?
So that's actually an exemption that's granted by the Assessors Office for low-income seniors, so you have to qualify for it. And then I'm notified of anyone who is receiving the exemption, they get half off of their triangle.
Great, thank you. Couple of questions. Other than the, the low income for the seniors, have, has the committee looked at offering any additional programs, you know, for non-senior, low-income residents based on AMI? One of my concerns is that, you know, when we look at, and this can be my theme for the rest of the night, just warning everybody, when we look at property taxes, when we look at all the fees we're adding, we have certain residents that are living on the margins. They're what's called house poor. Although they own a house, their income does not match. And every fee increase we add, every property tax we add, really affects them financially. And I know within state law, we, there's not a mechanism for property tax, but on these local fees, we can certainly look at creating programs that, similar to what you're doing for the low-income seniors, we do for low-income, non-seniors as well. And I didn't know if the committee had looked at that or had been any consideration.
It's not something that we have discussed, but certainly we, something that we can take back to, you know, the administration and work with the assessors to see if that is a possibility. I don't know if that, like, how that falls under any of the laws, but happy to look at, see if anybody else qualifies.
Thank you.
I think that is a place, because the exemption provision you asked to be identified is income-driven.
It's income-driven for seniors, so it's age as well as income. I'm asking for non-seniors who are low-income, considered low-income based on their AMI. Additionally, and this gets to the next item, one of the ways that in our family fills our recycle bins in the first week, so we have a big trash bin, we don't use it, we use the recycle bin. But has there been consideration, and I know that other people have, have talked about this on social media, has there been consideration of increasing recycling, decreasing the amount of trash by looking at doing recycling on a weekly instead of an every two weeks? I know that you can get the extra bin. Not everybody has the space or wants to have three bins at their location. So I didn't know if that was looked at.
Sure. That is something that we have looked at, and as much as we would like to offer that, the service for the, for the contract goes up very quickly. And so anything that you're offering on a weekly basis, obviously trash is something, you can't have trash sit around for a couple of weeks. So trash is necessity, but if you add in the other piece of doing recycling and trash every week, the cost is astronomical. And that's honestly why we have never, like, as soon as we get the prices, I, I just, you know, couldn't bring that to, to the board. And it's, it's a nice service, but it would be a lot more.
Thank you.
So I have a question through the Chair. So we're paying to take the recycling, but are we paying to dispose of the recycle? We are now?
So the, well, we have recycling processing costs that are in, in the contract. It's a great question, because in our previous contract, years ago, we did not have those costs. It was actually, we had several years that we got it, that really other towns were paying recycling processing costs, and we were not because it was part of our contract. But things have changed dramatically over the past several years, and it is something now that recycling processing costs are expensive, and not quite as expensive as trash, but they are, they, they do fluctuate. They fluctuate with the market, and the other part of that is making sure that people are recycling right. So we talk about contamination, the, the, the work that Colleen does every day, actually being out in, on every route and trying to identify any problems with putting the wrong items into the recycling bin. So that is something that we watch very closely, because if we have a high contamination rate in the recycling, it actually gets treated as trash and we get charged more. So that's why we're always trying to lead with education and be able to connect directly with the, with the resident on those items. Thank you.
Couple of questions too. What is the tonnage we're sending over to Willowbrader these days? Is it up? Is it down? Where are we in relation to?
So the, the tonnage unfortunately has gone up over, over the past several years. And as, as part of what, I guess, the next, the next incentive that we're talking about, overall, in the, in the DEP world, every year, as a municipality, we have to report, an annual report that Colleen sends in, and we have to identify everything that we do according to our solid waste program, including tonnage, recycling, and kind of where we're at. And we actually fall into a category for household pounds of trash that is really too high. So over the, over the years, they have, it's basically a red, red, yellow, orange, green, and unfortunately, we're kind of like in the orange category. So we're not the worst. We're definitely not the best, but our household trash has to, has to go down. Otherwise, we're going into the red.
Recycling, I know we work aggressively on that. That isn't helping with the tonnage at all, is what I'm hearing, or is it?
Well, recycling is, is treated separately. So recycling gets processed through recycling processing costs, and the tonnage for the trash goes to Willowbrader. So they're actually go to separate locations. Is that, is that answering your question?
Yes and no. I'll follow up.
Okay.
Offline. I see we're trying to incentivize, you know, swapping, which I think is, you know, not necessarily bad. The compost bins, what are we doing to promote those? Is that a viable way to get people to throw and get our tonnage down? And what can we do to get people to think about that?
Thank you for bringing it up. So compost, we, we sell a lot of compost bins in the summertime, and we actually just sold a compost bin within the past two weeks. We were thrilled about. We've just placed another order for a, for compost bins because they actually do sell very well. Years ago, we, we reduced the, the cost, so they were about $100 if you were to buy them in regular retail, and we sell them for 25. So we, we send out incentives to, or we send out education often to, to have people buy them. We do have people that are on board, do seek us out and buy those. If you were to take the food waste out of the trash, that is the heaviness in the trash. And we give education when we send a compost bin, we give the education on how to do that. If everybody were to use compost bins, it would help with tonnage, because the food waste is the heaviness in the trash.
So I guess that, I would like us to look at incentivizing that as opposed to incentivizing go to a smaller bucket, just because I think that's potentially helpful to a lot of people to understand that. But anyways, the overflow bags, I don't see a lot of them used. Where does that money go when people go and buy these at these variety of stores that we sell them at? What does that money go towards?
The money that we, the revenue that we get from the blue bag sale actually comes back to the town, and we use that towards the, the solid waste budget. Goes into the general fund, I believe. Right, Ed?
It goes to a special revenue account, and that money is used as an offset and voted annually. Tell me, is it an offset to the cost of disposal and collection?
Thank you.
Are there any other questions? Are you looking for a vote for us to approve these costs? Okay, is there a motion?
I don't have to call it out, right? I just make a motion that we approve the FY24 solid waste fee increases as proposed.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed? The chair is a yes as well.
Thank you.
And thank you to the committee too for working on this. It's not the most fun committee, so we appreciate your time on it. Thank you.
All right, and then 8B is the swap incentive. So we'll turn it back to you.
Thank you very much. So we're very excited to be able to offer, this is a new initiative that we worked with Ed Endori and the Solid Waste Advisory Committee, really as a way to try to have people start thinking differently about trash. The cost of trash isn't going down, it's going up. So to try to find a way to get people to switch and start thinking about recycling correctly and in having less trash. So Colleen spent a lot of time putting the flyer together and we're very excited about it. We came up with the little acronym, Solid Waste Action Plan Swap, and it kind of goes to the program. Colleen?
Yes. So we're hoping that it encourages people who have the large cart that aren't necessarily filling it on a weekly basis to switch to the smaller 35-gallon. It would save them money and then it would also hopefully reduce our tonnage if you're, we have less people who are just filling the bucket because they have it to fill. And if they needed to buy blue bags, they could do that. And then the additional revenue would also be coming in from people who are now buying blue bags that previously didn't have to, if they just need them once every so often because they now have a smaller bucket. So we would waive the $25 swap fee and also give $25 off the January 2024 bill as an incentive to swap at this time.
Thank you. Do board members have any questions? So all they need to do is contact you guys to switch?
Yep, there's just a form they would have to sign, and we have a draft of that in there as well. It would explain that the rules, the policy, the solid waste policy must be followed as far as having the lids fully closed. We definitely don't want people switching and then just overflowing the bin, that's counterproductive. But just to update the info that they are now on the smaller cart, that they keep it through fiscal '25 because we also don't want people swapping, getting the $25 off the bill and then just immediately going back to the large trash. So if they kept it for the rest of fiscal '24 and through '25, we would hopefully be able to see the difference in tonnage and blue bag income and see what, if it was a successful incentive.
The actual incentive, the waiving of the swap and the credit is coming out of a grant that we received from DEP, from a dividends program, which currently yields about 15,000-ish?
We did, we got 15,400.
So we're using that, we got approval from DEP to authorize us to use those funds for this incentive program.
Thank you.
So Madam Chair, if I may ask just one question. So I support this. I didn't know if, so one of the things that may make a resident hesitant to do this is there are some weeks where you do fill your trash and sort of the week after Christmas. A lot of the wrapping paper is not recyclable unfortunately, so, you know, they might be hesitant to do something like this because of the one or two weeks a year where they're going to fill their bin. Has, as part of this, have you thought about doing, I know other communities will do, like a trash forgiveness week twice a year where they don't have to buy the blue bags, but they can put out regular bags on this one specific day next to their bin in order to get rid of that sort of excess trash? And sort of incentivize them to do something like this, knowing that they will have that allowance after Christmas?
It's not something that we've talked about, but we can certainly bring it to the committee. It would, as part of the blue bag fee, not increasing the fee, we kind of thought that if people saw the benefit of going with the smaller cart with the less of the trash bill and the credit, and also the fact that we were not increasing the blue bag fee, we thought that that was, you know, kind of fair to balance out because we weren't increasing the fee across the board. But it can be something that we certainly bring to the Solid Waste Advisory Committee. But the blue bags do help, as Ed said, you know, with handling some of the offset costs. But we'll certainly bring it back.
Yeah, I mean, I think that, you know, something like that and something like Mr. Carpenter said with the compost bins might be something you keep in your back pocket in case this is not as successful as you want it to be. You can then further incentivize this.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions? Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
We have to take a vote on the incentive program or no?
I don't think so.
Okay, great.
Thank you for your support.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion, I see we're just ahead of seven o'clock. I'll make a motion that we move up agenda item 7D and 811. Scrap that, 7D and 7E because I think.
Okay, so in our packets, there's a gift acceptance from, oh, I'm sorry.
I'll second it.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The chair is a yes as well. In our packets, there's a gift acceptance for the fire department from the Fur Friends of Auburn.
Madam Chair, I'd make a motion that we accept with gratitude and let a letter be prepared for your signature to the Fur Friends.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The chair is a yes as well. So a discussion and potential vote on the December meeting schedule. So our next meeting for November is the 27th, which puts our first meeting in December as the 11th and our second meeting in December as the 20th.
Traditionally, we've only had one in December.
Okay.
Unless we need it to, but typically, and correct me if I'm wrong, but Mr. Manager will have the early bird renewal licenses for the 27th. And then on the 11th, we can always, just what we have in the past, just give a blank check if everybody, you know, if there's no issues on the licenses.
The 11th.
We usually have most of the licenses in by the 11th. Any of that come in by the end of the year without any issues?
I would make a motion that we have one meeting in December on the 11th, unless subject to the call of the chair, which is normal.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The chair is a yes as well. Okay, that puts us right on time for the tax classification hearing. So there needs to be a motion to open the hearing?
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion that we open the tax classification hearing.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Seth, if I may, before you get started.
Yes.
Madam Chair, members of the board, I want to thank Seth and Lisa for presenting tonight. I know they put a lot of hard work into this over the past several weeks. Seth, did you bring any copies that may be available for those who?
There are copies of the presentation in the back corner and there are some in the front as well.
Wait, sorry for the interruption.
No problem, just bear with me here and make sure I, make sure I have my bearings on this PowerPoint presentation. Okay, this is your fiscal 2024 tax classification. And I'd like to thank you for having myself, Seth Woolard and Lisa Targansky, representatives of the Auburn Assessors Department here. We're going to go through these slides, there's approximately 30 slides or so. And I would ask that everybody kind of hold questions until the end if we can. And in the name of just keeping things moving, there's a few slides that have a lot of historical data, like 15 years' worth of data. We have copies in the packet for you. We can revisit those if you want to talk about fiscal 2010 or 2012. But just in the name of time, I'm not going to touch on every single piece of data that's in every single slide. But if you have questions at the end, we can revisit that. So introduction, the calculations for the tax rate and other numbers are estimated as of the time of preparation. There may be additional information, informational slides, including the handouts that are not part of tonight's presentation. The purpose of the classification hearing allows a shift in the tax burden between property classes. This does not change the total tax levy for the community. It simply determines the share to be borne by each class. What the classification hearing doesn't do, it does not determine the tax rate for the town. It only determines the distribution. Classification does not determine how much money can be raised. Town meeting voters determine what the tax levy will be. Your tax rate, the tax levy is determined by the town meeting appropriation and expenditures, state and county charges, is paid for by using town revenues, excise, fees, enterprise and other available funds, total taxable real estate and personal property, state aid and reimbursements, new growth, debt exclusions and overrides. The role of the assessor. To value property for purposes of equitable taxation, to administer abatements and exemptions, to be a resource to taxpayers and to explain the classification options to the select board. Overview of the revaluation process. Residential properties, properties are adjusted annually or on an interim basis to full and fair market value. Attributes affecting value include style, condition, interior, exterior features and size. Commercial and industrial properties, values are primarily determined on an income approach to value per the Department of Revenue. Personal property is on a blended, original costless depreciation and/or a fair cash value approach. There are four votes at the classification hearing. A residential factor, shifts the tax rate between residential and commercial industrial properties. Open space discount, shifts the tax burden within the residential class to discounted open space, of which we have none in Auburn. The residential exemption shifts the burden within the residential class. And the small commercial exemption, which can be up to 10% of the assessed commercial value, which is traditional in Auburn. Percent of the levy for the four different property classes. Again, this is just kind of a historical overview from fiscal 2008 all the way up until fiscal 2024. And it'll show you the percentage of each class. So they're relatively the same, but the residential has grown slightly from fiscal 2008 to fiscal 2024, about 3%. And the commercial has decreased around 4%. Industrial saying pretty similar, same with personal property. The tax levy, the levy limit minus the maximum amount the town can levy in a given year. So it's last year's levy plus new growth, plus to up to 2.5%. Maximum allowable levy, levy limit plus debt exclusions and overrides. And the excess levy capacity is the levy limit minus the actual levy. Fiscal '24 levy limit calculations. Fiscal year 2023 levy limit was $52,691,207. The maximum allowable 2.5 levy increase for FY '24 is 1.3 million. Fiscal '24 new growth, 721,000. And any overrides, there was no overrides. So the 2024 levy limit was 54,729,551. The FY 2024 debt exclusion is $2,728,223. So the maximum allowable levy for fiscal 2024 is $57,457,774. Fiscal '24, what factors drive the tax rate increases? The Auburn middle school and high school for the upcoming fiscal year. This is the last year of the high school debt. So the debt exclusions, demolitions, properties going off the tax rolls due to demolition from snow damage, fire damage or other causes, properties becoming exempt, foreclosures by the town, purchases by exempt organizations. Fiscal 2024 growth trends, residential growth is up. Most, it's kind of the most stable growth, it's the highest class of all the classes of property, not as subject to being skewed by individual properties. Commercial growth is steady, numbers can be affected annually by one significant new property addition. Industrial growth is kind of similar to the commercial growth in that can be affected annually by one significant property. And the personal property growth is steady. Personal property growth are volatile, sometimes a lot of businesses come in and go out. The new growth four-year trend. So for fiscal 2024, which is the bar graph all the way on the right, you have the residential growth was about 325,000, commercial growth was 45,000, industrial is 35,631, and personal property, 315,415. The residential growth, just some notable, some notes on this. The Mary D. Stone and Julia Bancroft apartments are completed, so that's what kind of drove the residential growth. Personal property increases steadily, again, business is coming. Commercial industrial growth is stable this year primarily due to the commerce drive, construction and a few other small warehouse projects or additions. The residential value percentage change due to revaluation from fiscal '23 to '24. So this slide is primarily how much your values changed due to, this is the residential, so it's due primarily to sales comparison approach. So the overall residential change on the bottom was 10.7%. Within the residential class, the single-family class went up about 10.9%, condos 10.6%. Two and three families went up about 9.8%, land, a little over 5%. And the apartments four and above, it's 23%. That was kind of skewed by the completion of Julia Bancroft. But overall, the residential class is up about 10.5%, 11% for the year. We're going to vote on the residential discount. The residential discount is a vote to up to 20% discount to owner-occupied residential properties. It shifts the burden from the less expensive homes onto the higher-priced homes and non-resident homes. So essentially, this is an exemption that is primarily used on Cape Cod or in Boston for non-owner-occupied homes or vacation homes. So the non-owner-occupied would shift the burden more to kind of the vacation homes. It's not overly applicable to Auburn, it's never been adopted, but works in communities with a larger. with a larger amount of vacation homes are non-owner occupied. It's gonna be a vote by the select board on the small commercial exemption, which has been traditionally accepted, up to ten percent. The final vote of the Board of Selectment is the, um, on the commercial exemption, it has no effect on the residential or personal property. Industrial properties do not qualify for the exemption, but share the tax burden for the exemption. The exemption goes to the property owner, not the business, it relies on the triple-down effect. So the vote on the small commercial exemption continued, is for multi-businesses and single-tenant commercial properties, the assessed value must be less than a million dollars, and the businesses that operate on that parcel must have less than ten employees on each business. What it does is it shifts the tax rate by up to ten percent by annual vote between properties occupied by qualifying small businesses onto the other commercial and industrial properties. Applications are taken after the class classification hearing and processed, you know, if they're taken after the classification hearing, it is additional, um, it gets accepted, there's additional, um, calculations to be done, and it can delay setting the tax rate, although we're pretty much ahead of it for the most part. Any exemptions not processed prior to submission of the recap will impact the overlay when they would have to be taken out as an abatement. Applying the small business exemption, this is an example to Auburn. If you look on the far left-hand column, uh, those are, this is just an example, commercial value of a property, um, two hundred and fifty thousand, five hundred, seven hundred and fifty thousand, and this chart assumes an eighteen dollars per thousand tax rate on the commercial, tax rate. So if there was no exemption on the first one, on the two hundred and fifty thousand dollar property, the normal taxes would be, the actual dollar amount would be forty-five hundred with the commercial, ten, assuming it's ten percent. With the commercial exemption, those taxes would only be four thousand and fifty dollars, savings of four hundred and fifty dollars, and you can see as it goes up, every five, uh, two hundred and fifty thousand, it's about an additional four hundred and fifty dollars, and it's capped off at a million dollars. So if your value's over one million, it's, um, you don't qualify. Uh, this chart right here is the traditional CI split, uh, tax rate that's been adopted by the BOS over the years. So you can see the fiscal years, this is one of those charts that I won't go through every year, but the last couple of years, uh, twenty twenty, twenty nineteen, it started at one one seven, it went down, it held firm for twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two, and then last year it went down, uh, to one one two. CIP growth trends as a factor has changed. So again, this is another one of those slides, if you look all the way at the bottom, or the fiscal, this is last year's fiscal 2023, um, you can see that the, the new growth for fiscal 24, which is not in this one, was seven hundred and twenty-one thousand, but this is just explains the percentage, which was actually in a prior slide of each different class and how it, what the percentage of growth is. So it's pretty similar this year to the last fiscal twenty-three. FY23 costs to do business in Worcester County, these are some surrounding towns and their corresponding commercial tax rates for fiscal twenty-three, of which, uh, Auburn and Worcester are the only ones that have split tax rates and have a higher commercial tax rate than the other communities on this list right here. So this assumes, this bar graph just illustrates a commercial property valued at a million dollars and the corresponding commercial tax rates. So other than Worcester, uh, Auburn's pretty high up there on the, the chart compared to surrounding communities. Uh, this is the rate chart for fiscal 2024, and we highlighted the factors currently one, one, two. So if the factor stayed the same this year, that would produce a residential tax rate of fourteen dollars and seventy-nine cents, a commercial and industrial rate of seventeen dollars and twenty-seven cents, and assuming the small business exemption at ten percent was adopted, uh, the personal property rate would be seventeen dollars and nineteen cents. And you can see as the, the shift goes up at one one one, um, the residential rate goes up about five cents or four cents per factor. And conversely, if you go the other way, uh, the residential rate goes down about four or five cents per factor. The average of the splitting of the tax rate on the average property in Auburn for fiscal 2024, um, as you can see, the average fiscal 2024 value for each class in residential, it's four hundred and two thousand, one hundred and seventy dollars, so first year, I think last year it was three sixty-three for residential. Commercial is one million, two hundred and thirty-four thousand, nine hundred and seventy-two. The industrial average parcel was, uh, one million, eight hundred and sixty-five thousand, fifty-four dollars, and the average personal property account was a hundred and fifty-eight thousand, forty-six dollars. So what we have here is a display of, if you look at the center column with the taxes at one one two, uh, there's a breakdown of the residential, the commercial industrial and the personal property, which corresponded with the previous slide, and then if you go down the chart there, you'd see that the average residential, uh, tax bill is gonna be five thousand, nine hundred and forty-eight dollars, the average commercial, twenty-one thousand, three twenty-eight, the average industrial, thirty-two thousand, two hundred and nine, and the average personal property bill is gonna be two thousand, seven hundred and seventeen dollars, and that's at the same factor as last year. Now if you shift them a little bit each way, uh, you can see the corresponding, and in the next slide, it'll kind of break down, you don't have to get off the calculator, it'll break down how much, um, that would mean by shifting it. So again, uh, this slide in conjunction with the previous slide shows that, you know, if you don't change the factor, it's, it's gonna be what it is. If it goes to one one zero, the average residential tax bill would be thirty-six dollars more. If it went to one point oh eight, it'd be about seventy-two dollars more. If it went the other direction, the residents, uh, if it went to one one four, would save thirty-six dollars for the fiscal twenty-four year. But what's worth noting is kind of the effect it has on the commercial and the industrial, um, those small shifts, um, either way do make a significant difference, just because it's a much smaller portion of the, uh, the overall real estate parcels. So the effect, the effect of the, uh, split rates on commercial industrial assessments, uh, property A, these are hypothetical, commercial industrials, higher tax rates equal lower net operating income result in lower assessments. Property B, if it has a lower tax rate, generally it'll have a higher net operating income and it'll result in a higher assessment. So kind of higher taxes in general have a negative impact on everybody, but on building values and raising the tax rate lowers the assessment. Lowering the actual tax dollar gain from the split and discourages commercial industrial, uh, development and growth. Fiscal twenty-three, local towns and actual taxes, single-family residential, this is kind of a snapshot of surrounding areas, surrounding towns, abutting communities, what their average single-family home is valued at for assessment purposes and the corresponding tax rate, and what the actual tax dollar for the average household would look like in those communities. So you can see it's pretty expensive to live in Westboro. We get a lot of comparisons to Shrewsbury, um, but the assessed values of the properties are much higher there, so in the end, I think the net taxes, they pay more. The average Auburn residential tax bill versus state average, so in fiscal twenty-three, the average real estate tax bill was over seven thousand dollars, that's all communities. The average tax bill in Auburn was five thousand, seven hundred and seventy-five dollars. Our commercial and industrial tax rate is in the top twenty-five percent in the state. Auburn home value trends. They're going up, uh, just like everywhere else, but I think last year, uh, fiscal twenty-three, the average single-family house in Auburn was assessed at three sixty-three. This year it's up to four oh two. Excess levy history, this is proposition two and a half utilization, the town is allowed to levy up to two and a half percent. This year we're using, what, twenty percent, uh, or so?
Twenty percent of two and a half.
Yeah. So as you can see, this is, uh, this slides in a lot of the presentations at town meeting and whatnot, but over the fourteen years, um, the town administration has saved the taxpayers over sixty-seven million dollars due to keeping the taxation under the two and a half pretty minimal. And this last slide is just, well, this is the last one, there's another one, but this one kind of breaks it down just a little bit more, if you wanted to get a little granular with how far you could go with it in the corresponding tax rates for residential, commercial and commercial, industrial and personal property, so, um... This is actually the last slide. Personal exemptions are offered in the town of Auburn. In FY23, um, you know, we off, they're offered in every town, but in Auburn, we, we do do a lot and have, um, kind of stretched them as far as they could go, I'm sure there's more we could do, but the L, the forty-one C, I think used to be age sixty-seven, and we got that lowered to sixty-five. So there was fifty of those granted, which saved about fifty thousand dollars in, in tax, and, and, uh, as the solid waste folks alluded to earlier, some of these folks qualify for exemption, also offer their trash bill, and, uh, there's some exemptions as well with the sewer. Seventeen Ds, uh, surviving spouse, any age or seniors, uh, old, seventy or older, there's asset limits, twenty-two of those granted, over nine thousand dollars last year. Thirty-seven A, blind exemption certified through the Mass Commission of Blind, uh, there was twenty of those granted last year for our nineteen, almost close to twenty thousand. And the veteran exemptions, um, one hundred and forty-one of those granted, over two hundred and seven thousand dollars worth of taxation abated. So there are senior and veterans work-off programs administered through the senior center in conjunction with the town administration, and we take them off of the tax bill. If qualified, the resident can work up to a hundred hours at a rate of ten dollars an hour, and I think there's some, some talk of getting that to fifteen dollars an hour and possibly up to fifteen hundred dollars off, and earned dollars are deducted off of the actual tax bills. That's it.
Thank you, I think we're gonna start with, um, if anybody in the public has any questions or comments.
My name is Virginia Murphy, I am the affiliate liaison for the Auburn Chamber. I just wanted to submit, um, to the chair through the town's exhibit one and exhibit two that some of our speakers may be speaking about.
Certainly.
Hi, could you just please give your name and where you're from?
Yes, my name is Jackie Farren, I'm proud resident at six eighteen Oxford Street South, and the controller at Atlas Distributing.
Thank you.
Here representing the chamber tonight. First, we would like to recognize and thank all the Auburn businesses for their community support, um, sponsorships and donations to our schools, youth organizations and outreach services are made every year by local businesses, it's how we do things here, and as a business leader and a resident, I can say we're proud and grateful for that. Last year we came before you with the goal of achieving a single tax rate in Auburn over multiple years. You showed a strong commitment to that goal and lowered to one point one two. This year, we ask that you make the move to a single tax rate. It might sound like a big ask, but with the recent increases in assessments and the high school debt closing out soon, we believe this is an appropriate time to make the final adjustment to the single tax rate, um, with a much smaller burden on the residential rate. The goal is not purely the tax savings to existing businesses, of course, that's welcomed and allows us to continue to give back to our community and stay in town, but the broader goal is to compete as a community and to entice businesses that will enhance our community, bring jobs, services and goods to Auburn, which keeps spending and revenues in town. We have spaces available for new businesses and an outstanding residential community ready to support them. What we need now is to level the tax rate so that Auburn is their first choice rather than the towns around us. Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Mark Sarkisian Jr., I'm here speaking tonight representing my company Capital Siding in Auburn Realty, as well as being on the board of directors for the Auburn Chamber of Commerce. The business tax rate in two thousand and six was one point six two, the present value of one point one two. That's seventeen years we've been trying to get to a single tax rate. We are fighting to keep the businesses that are moving to our neighboring towns and losing tax revenues, and we're trying to retain, retain the ones that are presently here. I know at least of three Auburn businesses that are currently looking to relocate to neighboring towns because of better incentives. That is why we need to continue to work towards a single tax rate in this town. We have made progress in bringing businesses back to Auburn, but we should have been at a single tax rate by now. The businesses are the ones employing Auburn residences, they are the ones who are always getting asked to make donations and support town events, which we do, and sometimes that gets overlooked. So now it's time that the town gave something back to the businesses. The residents are receiving a lot of benefits from this town, they have two new schools, they own a beautiful golf course in Pappas Park, and those are only a few. So without help, and they did not vote for those changes, but they are paying the taxes on those changes. So I am asking the Board of Selectmen to not only keep the small business tax exemption, but also to lower the commercial tax rate to a single rate this year. We should all be working together on this, and in the long run, everyone's taxes will be lowered. In two thousand and eight, the Selectmen told us it would be a ten-year process to get it back to a single rate. Well, guess what? It's been fifteen years, and I've been here fifteen years in a row preaching this. Thank you, and, uh, hopefully we can have some more progress.
Hi, it's me again, we do have somebody online, um, that is, we would like to speak, but not sure if we need permission, Alex Guardiola.
Certainly.
Good evening, good evening, can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Chair and Select Board, my name is Alex Guardiola, I am Vice- I am Vice President of Government Affairs and Public Policy for the Worcester Regional Chamber of Commerce and our affiliate partner, the Auburn Chamber of Commerce. I want to thank you for allowing me to speak this evening remotely and apologize I cannot be there in person as I am in Washington DC for another work matter. The town of Auburn is at a critical intersection of their future. There is an excellent opportunity for the town to be a leader in central Massachusetts. Over the past eleven months since the governor took office, the focal point of the Commonwealth has been competitiveness. While at the state level, they focus on being competitive amongst neighboring states and across the nation, it resonates here in Auburn in being competitive amongst neighboring municipalities. Since 2012, this Select Board has successfully continued its original mission to incrementally move from a split tax rate to a single tax rate in order to attract new businesses into the town while retaining the existing companies. Auburn is just one of three remaining municipalities to have a dual tax rate system in central Massachusetts along with Clinton and Worcester. In 2018, Webster made a collective choice to move to a single tax rate, which had reinvented their Main Street commercial quarter by signaling to businesses that they are business-friendly and want to have them in their town. In 2019, Pittsburgh aggressively moved to a single tax rate, recognizing that other communities around them were luring companies to the towns and cities as businesses continue to look for places to call home west of Boston and expand their footprint. Clinton has publicly stated that without moving to a single tax rate in the next two years, they will continue to lose business bids to towns they compete with such as Hudson and Marlboro, and will certainly address it this year. Auburn is a unique position because of its location. Having major highways and roads running through it make it a prime location for companies looking to find a new home. Despite other towns not having the same access to roadways, they continue to attract businesses that could have come to Auburn. Empty parcels and buildings such as the Sears location in the Auburn Mall, the Yankee Drummer, the Bed Back and Beyond, to name a few, continue to stay vacant because of the deterrence of high commercial tax rate. In my daily conversation with business owners and developers, one of, if not the biggest factor taken into consideration when looking for a site location is the commercial tax rate. This is because the cost savings in taxes are the difference between hiring more employees or purchasing more equipment. As a reminder, these businesses get hit twice with the tax rate for both the commercial property tax rate and their personal property taxes. As you can see from exhibit two, the map of all the commercial tax rates surrounding the towns of Auburn, Auburn is more than $3 per 1,000 more than the closest tax rate which is Grafton. It is more than $4 per 1,000 more than Milbury and more than $5 more than 1,000 than in Shrewsbury. As an exercise, I did a comparable analysis for you for a few towns on the type of businesses that Auburn has been talking to try to get into town, an attractive food market that not only hires and services the town's residents, but brings in outside dollars for those coming to purchase from it. As you can see from exhibit one, I used the popular market basket in Oxford, the newly built market basket and the new, and the housing around it in Shrewsbury and the bustling Wegmans in Northborough. If you look at the taxes they pay per year versus what those buildings would cost to be located in Auburn, there is a real cost savings and a deterrence to be a successful market such as these examples here in town. Again, the cost savings would be critical for new employees and expansions, but with a competitive tax rate, a similar market could fill one of these empty parcels previously mentioned, broaden in the commercial tax base and in turn lowering everybody's taxes because the tax pie would have more commercials dollars added to it. Lastly, I'd like to mention one, if not the fastest growing industries in the country, the life science sector, including research and development and biomanufacturing. In conversations with Massachusetts bio, biomedical initiatives and their president and CEO, companies in Boston and Cambridge are clamoring for new locations to expand. Because of its location and access to roadways, Auburn was always mentioned as a great location to find new homes for these companies. But because of the competition in property tax rate and personal tax, as these companies have millions of dollars in equipment alone, towns like Grafton, Devens and Lester continue to be top of mind for new development. It is time for Auburn to take a hard look at being the leader in central Massachusetts as it once won and once again can be and send a message across the Commonwealth that business is business-friendly and move the single tax rate as it had stated it would once that high school taxes were off the tax rolls. I ask this body to consider moving to a one-to-one CIP and make Auburn competitive again. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any additional comments?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Deborah Seaman, and I'm a resident of Auburn as well as a business owner and the president of the Auburn Chamber. I'm here tonight to share my story. Kevin and I grew up in Auburn. Actually, he was my next-door neighbor. We both attended the Auburn Public Schools until high school, when Kevin decided to go to Bay Path. Yet somehow we remained, we remained high school sweethearts. Kevin and I just married after college, and for most of our married life, we called Auburn our home. Auburn was where we grew up, where we met, married, established a family and created a business. Let me take you back for a moment to 1995. Kevin had a business partner, Rob, and together they established Johnson and Seaman Engineering, which was located on Faith Ave. Due to the successful nature of their business, Kevin and Rob were able to grow into their own business entities. And in 2007, Kevin and I were able to rebrand our business to what people know us today as Seaman Engineering Corporation. We continue to be a part of the Auburn Chamber, not only as residents, but as small business owners. Ten years later, in 2017, we needed to sell our three properties. Never once did we consider leaving Auburn. We just thought we would have a new Auburn business address. However, the rental property rates were out of reach for the amount of space we needed in order to grow our business and to purchase a building in Auburn at the time of property was out of the question due to relocation constraints. We needed to look outside of Auburn for a place to rent, and we did find a beautiful rental property in Milbury at Felter's Mill. Kevin and I set a five-year time span before moving and thought that we would be able to move back to Auburn after five years. Being a small company, our footprint is not like those at Milbury Outlets. Therefore, we are grateful to the larger industries that came into and keep coming into Milbury to help maintain and keep the community financially strong. This also helps make it possible for the small business owners to thrive and contribute on a smaller scale to the growth of a community. So often Kevin and I find ourselves in discussion regarding the goals of our business. It's kind of hard not to since we, well, live together, eat, work, 24/7. We're always together, so the business is always a forefront in our minds. Our conversation really does revolve around why Milbury, Oxford, Grafton, Shrewsbury and even Webster is more desirable to businesses than Auburn. We write, we remembered back in the day on how the Auburn Mall was the happening place. People came from all over to shop at the mall. As kids, Kevin worked at Sears and I worked at Cherry and Webb. Our friends worked at other stores. During Christmas and holidays, Southridge Street, it was hopping. You couldn't even find a parking space. Um, Auburn was the ideal location with all the connecting highways, yet retains the beauty of a small-town feel. We have an amazing police and fire, an amazing school system with a superintendent, staff, principal, teachers that care about the community. Auburn offers so much. We live here. We have such a history with Auburn, supporting the police and fire in schools and even paying the taxes. So why can't we get our business back to Auburn? Although we enjoy being in Milbury and helping them in the same ways, we would love our business to come back home to where our dream was first born. What's stopping us? Dual taxation, the higher tax rate for a business to operate in the town Auburn, not to mention the personal property tax that businesses pay in addition to the tax rate. It's the kryptonite that keeps us and other businesses away. Sorry, I'm getting emotional. I really love Auburn. Sorry. Why are we still in Milbury? Milbury has a single tax rate and so do the other towns surrounding Auburn. Why are businesses not coming to Auburn? Auburn is just too expensive. It's one of three communities in the whole state of Mass to continue with the dual tax rate. Yet as a community, we are left behind. Everyone is traveling to other communities to work, to shop and just, just look at the mall. Everyone's leaving. In order for us to come back to Auburn, we are waiting for the single tax rate because that is the only way our small business can grow and create jobs as well as maintain our internship program that we have established with Bay Path and other area colleges to help teach our youth to become future engineers. Auburn agreed years ago to create a single tax rate, and I believe Auburn will keep its promises. After all, we are a town built on integrity and character. Auburn is amazing in that way. There is a quote that I'd like to use from Roy T. Bennett. "It's only after you've stepped outside your comfort zone that you begin to change, grow and transform." Thank you.
Thank you. Additional comments? Please.
Good evening. Durin Goodrich, Fablo Owen Burke Drive and a town meeting member. And I have nothing prepared because I really hadn't planned on speaking tonight. But, um, two things happened. Number one, I didn't want to be in your position and have it said that not a single resident who's not affiliated with the chamber got up and spoke. And number two was the dreaded ask of going to a single tax rate in one night. I know that we've, we've looked to close that gap and eventually go to a single tax rate. But when I heard that, I knew I had to get up. The businesses do contribute an awful lot to this community. They absolutely do. I'm not going to take that away from them. I supported when I sat in your chair, closing this tax rate. But, um, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna ask you for a number. Not gonna ask you to keep it the same rate. I'm sure you've all done your homework. And you know, you know your residents, you know the businesses and you know what needs to be done. But, um, but please don't go to that single tax rate. And looking at my notes, I do want to add one other thing. We have been talking to the residents, be it town meeting members, the Select Board, whatever, just, you know, so everything's on the table here. Yes, we are, um, retiring the high school debt. But in the very next breath, we are selling a public safety complex because we are retiring that debt. So I really feel that that piece for the integrity of what we've said to town meeting members and what we've said to residents, that piece has to come out of the equation. We are retiring the high school debt, but we are making promises that if you support this town, this public safety complex, you're not going to feel it as much because the high school debt is retiring. Again, you have a very, very difficult decision to make tonight. You know, will we get to the single tax rate? I, I know it's taken fifteen years and it may take longer and, you know, we've had things like, you know, partial recession and a global pandemic that, you know, I mean, I think I talked to four people today with COVID, not, not face-to-face, on the phone, on the phone, so, on the phone. But, um, but I know you'll do the right thing. You're all sitting in that chair because the residents want you there. So, um, good luck with your, your next part of the evening, which is discussion amongst yourselves and whatever vote you take.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any additional comments from the public? Do board members have any questions? Uh, okay. Seeing no questions, we would need a motion to close the hearing. Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The chair is a yes as well. So we have four votes we need to take tonight. The first being, um, the residential factor.
Make a motion that we do not adopt the residential factor.
We, we need to set the residential factor. So you would make a motion to not change?
We're talking about two different things.
Oh, sorry.
We're talking about the residential property. And there is the shift that the
Owner occupant.
Residential factor is what the assessor talked about to discuss shifting. I'm sorry, I'm totally losing.
That was the 20% for vacation-style homes?
You're absolutely right, Madam Chair. I am wrong. It's a residential exemption.
Okay.
So I would make a motion to not adopt the residential exemption.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
The chair is a yes.
I would make a motion that we do not adopt the open space discount.
Is there a second?
Second.
Before we take a vote, can I just ask clarification? Uh, so there is currently no open space. Okay, so this is, really doesn't matter one way or the other. Perfect. Thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The chair is the, I, yes as well.
I would make a motion that we adopt the small commercial exemption at the maximum amount of 10%.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Certainly.
So I just wanted to, uh, take a flavor of, uh, just to get an understanding on the board. So you all have, um, sort of the summary that, um, Mr. Carpenter and I put together of discussions we had uh, with, with town staff in term, in the lead-up to this meeting with respect to the, all the different exemptions we offer, we don't offer, et cetera. And we know that we are maxed out on the commercial exemption. And as we heard tonight, uh, it's limited to just, uh, $1 million as well as only 10%. Um, I don't think it goes far enough to support the businesses. Other communities have gone through enabling legislation to either increase the amount or the number of employees so that it offers a wider, um, cast a wider net to support our business community. Um, it does require votes before town meeting to, uh, to go to the state to get that enabling legislation. Um, before we go down, um, this room, I'm not asking for a vote tonight. I just want to get a, a sense of the board. Is that something that in the future, as we approach May town meeting, knowing that the warrant will open and then the warrant will close, that we should be considering? Um, if this, uh, if, if the other members are in favor of, of looking at that?
Yes.
Aye.
Yeah, I would agree as well.
Thank you.
If I may, Madam Chair, I think would it be important to come back to the board in terms of current year value? To see if those limits change, what the impact is as a result of that shift on the rest of the commercial?
Yeah, I imagine that'll be the, the whole discussion in terms of, but I didn't want to make staff do a whole bunch of work and do that analysis at the board. Had already in their head, they weren't going to vote for it anyways. Wanted to save you time and energy, but. Okay, thank you.
And it's eight cents per thousand currently under the current rule, from what I'm told from the assessor. So just so you know, the split essentially is eight cents per thousand to those, towards those who bear the cost of this exemption.
Okay, so there has been a motion and a second on the small commercial discount. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The chair is a yes as well.
I would make a motion on the residential factor that we retain the factor of 1.12.
Is there a second?
I'll second for discussion.
Uh, okay. Please go ahead.
So, uh, last year, we had discussions, um, trying to lower that rate over the sensible, trying to get it down. Uh, I think we saw a $52 increase on the residential by moving it, um, from 1.15 to 1.12. I think this year, if we were to go 1.09, it's a $54 increase. And I know we have had discussions about the high school debt coming off and new things coming up. There will be that gap period, but I do think it will help us get closer and the burden really wouldn't shift like people. And the burden really wouldn't shift like people have said it will shift. And I think working together with the commercial businesses will help overall in the long run and get that rate down. There are a lot of commercial properties out there on the market. Personally, I look quite a bit. There are roadblocks and hurdles to, to business in this town. It doesn't mean everyone is facing those same hurdles, but we did hear some stories for that. So I think in good faith, if we continue to narrow that gap and not get there on one night, I think a $54 increase to the residents at this time is something most of us can achieve. I know we've had conversations about-- and the last slide, I appreciate you guys for putting that on there, showing, you know, that we do have ways for those people that are truly in need to do that. And I know that we've had discussions trying to get those savings back into the people that need it and make sure that no one is being put out by, by an increase. So I'd like to see the rate moved. I don't know what everyone else is thinking.
So I ran 10 years ago on a platform that I wanted to slow this because during the recession, we had one year, and Mrs. Goodrich will remember this, the year that they, this board, our predecessors, went back a factor of eight in the middle of the great recession, when people were losing their homes. This board took that vote. That board didn't fare too well because the residents saw that they were hurting. They're looking to share the burden. So yes, it's $52 on top of what they're already going to be paying. So it's not $52. And they're just getting handed an increase in tax, in a refuse bill. And they're getting, God knows what else they're getting this year from the state and the federal government because they don't seem to pay much attention to affordability, despite people talking about it at those levels. My concern is, we made a huge leap last year. And, you know, every year that I've sat here, whether we've moved the factor or we haven't, the commercial and industrial rate has gone down. And every year that I've sat here, the residential rate has gone up. Every resident in this town has had to deal with rising costs. When I started in pharmacy in the 1990s, everybody had two copays, $4 and $3. They didn't have the high deductibles that they have today. We now have seniors who pay several thousand dollars in the so-called donut hole. And the reality is, we are a town that is rapidly aging. And these people depend on Social Security. And people can argue, that was never the intent. Okay? I know a family member who, the 2008, they owned a home, they didn't have a lot in retirement, so they took a reverse mortgage. They lost everything. That money never came back to them. So, you know, when we ask the residents to this mythological thought that if we go to a single tax rate, everybody is going to save money. Well, that's not true. And that has not been true at the national level or at the state level. We're now one of the most expensive states in the union. California, we used to not even be anywhere near them. Now, we're almost akin to them, except for they have a population that is far greater than us. The communities that we're constantly compared to do not have the tax base that Auburn has, nor do they have 17% of their available land zoned for business. So it, it often amazes me when we have this. Shrewsbury has 30,000 people. We're nothing like Shrewsbury. Their median income is well above Auburn's and has been for the 28 years that I've been privileged to serve the town of Auburn. So Westboro has also had a ridiculously high, and good for them. We have never approached that. When we did the master plan in 2006, we were in the mid-'60s as an, as a median income. We're now in the median of 73 to 75 from the last. So we can't compare ourselves to communities that do not even reflect us with relation to population, nor do they represent us in many other significant ways. The city of Fitchburg probably gets a lot of federal dollars to go to a single tax rate because they get things that Auburn doesn't qualify for. And the town of Oxford gets things that Auburn doesn't qualify for because we have well over a billion dollars in value of commercial and industrial property. So we don't get the gimmies that some of these other communities get because they didn't choose, like we did, to build out in the 1950s, a sewer system, a water system. Oxford doesn't even have a water system, nor do they have a sewer system. They depend on us and they depend on Webster. So we're bearing the cost, to some extent, of their lack of preparedness for their growth. You know, I just can't see asking the residents consistently to reach into their wallet and take money out because they support the kids as well. They support the Historical Society. They donate baskets. They donate gift certificates. They do all the fundraisers for their kids as well. So our residents are very generous and we're very lucky. And I'm going to steal shamelessly from Mrs. Goodrich and say, these parks are available to your employees. These schools are training your future employees. So Auburn has put money into infrastructure to support business in different ways. We also have an Economic Development Officer, which a lot of these communities do not have. That's a full-time position that is here to assist the business community migrate through the charming world at the state and federal level. So I think Auburn has invested and invested that money back into the business community and into infrastructure for the future of our state and our town. So I appreciate everything that everybody said. And I am not in favor of moving the factor back.
Does anybody else have any comments?
Nope.
Come here, please.
I am in favor of continuing the, the trend to decrease the, the split rate. And if we're at 1.12 now, we should, I would suggest that we go to 1.10 or 1.08.
Okay, so I'm going to apologize because I have a million and one things going into my head. And I think that this is too important of an issue to not explain to the businesses, as well as the residents, exactly what is gearing, is driving my vote. Similar to believing that the small commercial exemption does not do enough to support those businesses that are on the margins, as I like to call them, I don't think personally that the personal exemptions that the town offers, although we are at the maximum allowed by the state, goes far enough for those residents that are living on the margins. Be they senior citizens, yes, we offer the senior citizen discount. We are at the top of maximum amount allowed by the state. But if you happen to have on your deed your child as a co-owner or, or any percentage of your house in order to pass that on to them when you, you know, unfortunately pass away, you don't qualify for that anymore because their age knocks you out. If you are, you know, if, you know, regardless of the percentage you own, I don't think that goes far enough. Also, the income levels, again, we're at the max the state allows, are so low that a lot of seniors that are living on the margins don't, still don't qualify because they don't have, they have too many assets. And their income is too high, even though they are living literally Social Security check, pension check, the pension check. And I don't, can't support going to a complete one-to-one knowing that, you know, we're not doing enough to protect them. We also offer zero discounts, although we do the legally blind. The state currently does not have a program for any other disability. If you are permanently disabled and wheelchair and you cannot work and you are working on it and you are living on SSI, you know, you do not qualify for any exemption. You know, these are things that we, as a community, should be doing more for. Going to the state for enabling legislation, making sure that those living on the margins, additionally low income. We have people that are house, you know, they're called house poor. They own a house, but they are living paycheck by paycheck. They don't qualify for any exemption either. I'm concerned about them. And yeah, I understand it's another $56. But again, it's a $56 here. It's the additional, the refuge fee because we don't offer any discount for them. Then it's an increase in the dog license, and it's an increase here, and it's an increase in there. And all those increases add up to people not being able to afford to live in the house that they live in. And, and I'm concerned about that. And that's why I do not support going to a, you know, a, a level tax tonight. Additionally, I'll be quite honest with you. I have not heard a, a good argument for the fact that generally that a, a single tax rate brings in a large amount of development to the town. You know, I think there are other programs to incentivize businesses, to support them, that, that the town should do. But pointing to a mall, malls everywhere are closing because it's an old business model that just doesn't work. However, I go to the Auburn Mall a lot because my wife likes to shop at Macy's, and she has a Macy's card and Victoria's Secret card. And we go there, and I will tell you, is, is although it might not be the mall it once was, all but one storefront is filled, except for Sears. There are small businesses in there. There are businesses in there. So I don't like when people point to the mall and say it's dying. The fact of the matter is, they might not be stores that I shop at or you shop at, but there are stores that people shop at. And they're, and they're in there, and we should be supporting them and not saying the mall is dying. You know? So I don't think that, you know, pointing to the mall is, is, is a good example. I will tell you tonight, and partially this is because I've had, you know, conversations with the staff at the Greater Western Chamber, where I've made them very clear, you know, that you have to show me, you have to demonstrate that moving to a single tax rate will bring in real development. Will bring in biotech. Will bring in the kind of businesses where you will bring in, you know, where you will see the jury square plan actually move forward with respect to retail on the front, mixed use, residential, biotech. Those types of, you know, economic development spurs that will uplift our community. So when, when Alex, you know, tonight said that he had spoken to the biotech and Auburn is attractive, that got me thinking, okay, I'm now going to be willing to move away from, I will never go to a split tax, to a single tax rate, to I will consider going to a single tax rate. Because when you bring in more development, when you bring in more property, the fact of the matter is, is the taxes are going to go down for everybody because there's more people sharing the pie. And my event, my goal is to reduce the amount of taxes that residents are paying for, especially those living on the margins. So tonight, I'm going to vote to shift towards a single tax rate. I'm not going to go to a complete single tax rate. But next year, I'm going to be looking for those actual real things making, you know, sort of, not, not a, a conversation with the head of biotech. I'm going to be looking for real, actual changes, real development, things in the works. Because I don't buy the fact that somebody wants to go to Sutton instead of Auburn because we just had a trucking company move here despite Sutton's single tax rate, despite it being, you know, a lower tax rate. They chose to come to Auburn. And they didn't do it because of the taxes. They did it because of the access to 90, 290, 395. You know, that's what makes Auburn attractive. And businesses do place, you know, as Ms. Carpenter said, you know, businesses do benefit from the amount of service levels that we provide compared to other communities. You know, previously, you know, previous meetings we had both our fire chief and our police chief talk about their busiest times are during the peak AM and PM commutes where their officers or their fire departments are responding. And that's when you have people coming into Auburn. That's when our daytime population spikes far above our nighttime population. We have to have a larger police department than some of our surrounding communities because of that. We have to have a more active fire department than our surrounding communities because of that. So there are costs that support the businesses that the town and residents are also sharing. You know, and this is a community, and the businesses do a lot for us. But, you know, it's not like you don't get anything as well. You know, it, we are, in fact, you know, a community, you know, that all works together. So tonight, I'm not going to vote to keep it at the same current. I'm going to vote to shift it. But I'm certainly not going to go to a single tax rate. You know, looking at, and I'm going to ask for a clarification with the current, with, with, you know, with the assessor. Right now, and I know we're not setting the tax rate, we're setting the split. But let's be honest, we all look at the tax rate and how much we're actually going to be paying. That's what we really care about. Right now, the current residential tax is $15.88. Is that correct? So even going down to a, and in your projection on page 25, is if we went to a 1.1 split, we'd be, the residents would be paying $14.88. Is that correct? Roundabout? So currently, we are at a $15.88 tax rate. If we go to a 1.10 split per page 25, the residential would be 14.88 approximately when you factor in everything else. So we could go, move towards the businesses, move towards a single rate, and the residents would still effectively be paying a dollar less per $1,000 of property value. So it's a win-win. It moves it in the direction the businesses want to see. The businesses are paying less of a share. The residents are still saving money. I'm not factoring in the fact that the high school is moving off because I agree with, with Ms. Goodrich that although we know the high school is moving off, I'm somebody who's supporting a public safety and going to make that same argument that it's a level, it's a level field. But I think at a 1.1, we move in the right direction. You know, we show good faith to the business community that we are going to keep moving there. And the residents are still paying a dollar less per $1,000. So to me, that's a win-win-win for the residents, for the businesses, and for the town of Auburn.
Can we get you to 1.01?
Don't push it.
Come on.
Madam Chair, I'm going to withdraw my motion because I can count to three. And it's not on my side.
I'd like to make a motion that we adopt a 1.09 shift.
Is there a second?
I will do second for discussion only because we don't have what a 1.09 would be. We have a 1.12, a 1.1, and a 1.08.
Well, if you go to the previous page, page 24.
Yep.
And then the difference from a 36 to a $72 shift, that's, I did the math, and I got 54. You can check that.
I'd rather check with the assessor. Not, not that I don't trust your math, Steve.
That's perfectly fine. And that's, again, a dollar a week, essentially. That's how I figure that.
$14.93 for the 1.09. But that's on the last, on the last slide.
Each 32.
32.
Here we go.
Okay.
Excuse me, through the chair. Was that 42?
32.
30. Oh, page 32.
So I'm going to go on a limb here. And I'm willing to support a 1.09. Again, I'm moving, I'm taking the vote this year. And next year, I won't necessarily take that vote unless I see movement towards real business development coming into the town.
I agree. Would you second that?
I'd already seconded it, but I'll second for a vote this time.
Okay, so the motion to set the residential factor at 1.09. And a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The chair is a yes as well. So it is at 1.09. Moving along in the agenda to number six. We have no communications. We have no 7C proclamations or recognitions. The town manager items have been satisfied. We have no table items, no member items. In our packets, there are meeting minutes. Are there any changes or corrections to the minutes? Seeing none, I will take them as accepted. We just need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
The chairs opposed? The chair is a yes as well.